Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have started streaming. I'm Paul Gleeson. I am chairing tonight's meeting in the absence of the Chair. And councillor Drayton has agreed to act as vice-chair today, just to keep me in the straight and narrow. Before we continue this evening's agenda, I need to run through some housekeeping details. I would like to remind everyone in attendance this evening that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on YouTube. Mobile phones should be turned off or switched to silent mode. Please ensure you use the microphone system at all times when addressing the meeting to help everyone hear clearly, both in the room and for the recordings and remote participants. Please speak directly into the microphone as clearly and closely as possible. There are currently a limited number of microphones available. We meant to have a new set, I understand, but they haven't arrived. And so officers will provide people with microphones if they need them, moving them around. And for our speakers, we'll bring you on when it's your turn to speak. Thank you. Restroom facilities for ladies are on this floor and for gentlemen halfway down the main stairs. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, officers will escort everybody out of the building to the nearest fire safety point in the car park. Finally, please be advised that abuse or intimidation of any kind will not be tolerated. Anyone who is deemed to be breach this requirement will be warned and asked to refrain. If their behaviour persists, they will be asked to leave the meeting. So we now go to part one of the agenda. Apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies have been received from councillor Patsy Marson and councillor Alison Austin.
Declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare any interest in respect of tonight's meeting? Minutes. Do I have permission to sign the minutes of the meeting held on the 24th of July 2025? Councillor Noble.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I do have a question regards on page four. And Inspector Cotton was given various responses. We go to one, two, three. Point four was about crime outcome rates, but that's not what I asked him about. I asked him about the crimes solved or successful prosecutions. And that wasn't given. And probably they didn't want that information in the public domain, perhaps because the meeting's being recorded and livestreamed. But I just thought the comments should reflect that, that that's what I was asked. I asked, and the information was not given. I think it's quite relevant. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Noble. I've noted that and it's on record this evening. I think there were limitations perhaps to what Inspector Cotton could say on the night. Yeah, thank you.
Obviously, we'll amend the meetings so that you are sadly answered. Otherwise, a member's happy for me to sign the minutes. Thank you. On two pages again. Thank you. So now we get to update on actions from the minute of the last meeting. Phil Perry will provide that.
Thank you, Chair. This update is right and is not already covered within this evening's agenda. The first being the tour of assets and open spaces. This morning, a number of members of the committee and officers undertook the tour of assets and open spaces, visiting seven sites. The outcome is that some painting work is to be undertaken and the replacement of safety surfaces at some sites will require further investment. Some other issues which were detected during the tour, including dog fouling, bins and signage are already being actioned. A report will come to committee regarding the tour most likely for the next January meeting. Next item is Central Park security. At March's meeting, it was agreed that the contract for security and gate locking at Central Park would not be renewed after the current contract ended on the 31st of August and that a working group would be established to consider the future position. The working group met again earlier this month. This occurred after an extensive period of investigation by officers and Lincolnshire Police to consider whether there were alternative options which were both viable and affordable. Lincolnshire Police had expressed concerns about the prospect of the gates being unlocked overnight. And as a result, options had been considered, which have included Lincolnshire Police taking on paid responsibility for locking the gates on the basis that alternative arrangements would be made for the unlocking of gates through existing council staff. Various combinations and outcomes and options have been fully considered. Despite exhaustive inquiries, Lincolnshire Police have confirmed they will not be able to proceed on this basis. And it has not been possible to identify alternative options which would be operationally viable and affordable. Since the 1st of September, the gates have therefore been unlocked and the council's community safety team, CCTV team and environmental health team are carefully reviewing any incidents. To date, there has been one report of alleged theft taken in the park and no incidents recorded on CCTV. There have been no incidents reported to environmental health and it is to be hoped that when British summertime ends, incidents reduce even further. It is anticipated that there will be further meetings of the working group before a report then comes before committee about the long-term options when a position is clearer. The working group comprises councillors Doran and Gleeson, following councillor Gosh's resignation from the working group. And if any additional councillor would like to join, please confirm this now or let democratic services know after the meeting. Thank you. The next element is highways. The overview and scrutiny committee had been due to hear from Lincolnshire County Council Portfolio Hall of Highways on the 4th of September. All members of BTAC were invited and some members submitted questions in advance. However, councillor Cheney was unable to attend because of ill health and it is anticipated that he will attend in December. And again, all BTAC members will be invited. At the overview scrutiny committee on the 2nd of October, Lincolnshire County Council's road safety manager, Stephen Bachelor, will attend and should BTAC members wish to attend, councillor Gleeson has confirmed that they are more than welcome to do so. The next item is the community government's review working group. The CGR working group met this afternoon to consider the outcomes of the phase one consultation. 126 responses were received with a clear majority in favour of establishing a single parish council for Boston Town. The group agreed to progress to the next stage of the review, including drafting proposals for a single parish council based on the existing BTAC area. Consideration will also be given to the inclusion of nearby unparished areas. Draft recommendations will be prepared for full council in November with a second phase of public consultation planned for early 2026. The next item is the green flag. Regular working group meetings have continued and it last met on the 10th of September. The neighbourhood's operations manager and volunteer coordinator attended and provided updates on how their teams were supporting the green flag application process. The volunteer coordinator has agreed to attend future meetings. The green flag management plan was discussed with specific elements such as the SWOT analysis and detailed history identified for working group members to agree upon at the next meeting. Scott Higgins and I also met Carl Becock, the new group manager for street scene and commercial services at Central Park this week to introduce him to the area. Carl brings extensive experience regarding the green flag award process and will be working to help bring Central Park up to the required standards to help shape the management plan. Carl has also agreed to brief the BTAC working group members at his next meeting. That concludes my uptake, Chair.
Councillor Doran?
Yeah, thank you. I've got a question about the BTAC operatives. Is it appropriate to ask it now?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
I know you didn't feed us the back about the officers I made or not. Yeah, I was very surprised. I really was hoping the Chair would be here this evening so that I could ask for her account of what happened. But I was very surprised to receive an email from Dale Broughton telling us that the BTAC operatives had removed those dreadful red crosses that were painted on the sheep on Bargate Roundabout. It was a disgusting display of graffiti, but they were there for several weeks. So I was keen to know, A, did the Chair of BTAC instruct that the BTAC operatives remove that graffiti? That is part of their remit. And B, why was Dale Broughton getting involved? Because he's got nothing to do with BTAC at all. He's not on this committee and he shouldn't be instructing BTAC operatives to do anything. So I just wanted to follow the line of sight really on that issue and find out what happened. So I'm not sure if you're aware, Phil, but if you're not, we can wait till people are back.
I'm afraid I'm not councillor, but I will try and find out. So we'll pick this up afterwards and get a response back.
Councillor Noble? Sorry. So we now come to public questions. One of the questions from members of the public will see two clear working days prior to this meeting.
There are none, Chair.
Thank you. Public speaking time. I understand we have somebody and we were notified who wishes to speak, which is Mrs Hazel Webster?
Now, I apologise for reading this rather than speaking verbatim. I seem to have miserly laid my autocue. So can you hear me? How's that? Is that better? Good. Right. Exactly one year ago, with no public consultation, the Fenside bus stopped going through Straight Bargate to the War Memorial. Danger to pedestrians being cited as the reason. This caused considerable inconvenience and physical difficulty for passengers, many of whom were elderly and infirm. One year on, those passengers, now older and even more decrepit, together with others as people age, are still facing the same problem. Regular use of Call Connect or taxis is not an option for many and not everyone can afford to career around in geriatric chariots. During a meeting I had with Anne Doran, she told me she would not recommend a return of the service as she saw no need. That's completely understandable. She's not elderly or disabled and she has a car. There are at least 12 vital services and shops around Wide Bargate which without a car can only be reached by walking from the nearest bus stop near Boots. The most important is probably Parkside Surgery and Pharmacy in Tawney Street. By definition, only those not at their best go to the doctor. Anne Doran's suggestion to me that as I live on the Sleaford Road area, I should change to the sidings practice was unhelpful. Stephen Woodcliff recently stated that people can make a choice about going to where they shop. It's difficult to make a choice if reaching those shops is restricted by lack of transport. Boston Town Centre Strategy and Action Plan 2023/27 is entitled A Town Centre for Everyone. With a town centre effectively split in two, with a marketplace offering few basic everyday items, you can't even buy a newspaper there. And Wide Bargate with its medical services, food stores, post office and so on, but no means of getting there except on foot, a town centre for everyone sounds a bit hollow. Reinstituting the route through Straight Bargate would be the most helpful option. A few pedestrians complaining about harassment by the bus as they meandered carelessly through the precinct, sinking the ambiance of the town, should not pay precedence over the needs of regular users of Wide Bargate. Even back in 2017, Mr Weekly of Briar Lane stated there had been no incidents involving buses in Straight Bargate and there had been no conflict over bus stops with the county council which owns the marketplace. The twice weekly market with its greatly reduced number of stalls cannot claim to create a dangerous route. The bus ran safely through it when it was much livelier. If this suggestion is not acceptable, surely it would be possible to run the route along John Adams Way. The bus would stop in the marketplace, then go through South End, turning left onto John Adams Way. The road from South End to Wide Bargate is not congested, as has been claimed. The congestion starts just over the new bridge with roundabouts and minor exits all the way to West Street, a route already taken by the Fenside bus. At the Georgians Roundabout, the bus could turn into Bargate, then travel down to the original stop by the War Memorial, where it would cause no problem to traffic and provide seating or shelter to passengers. This stop is already used by another bus. The return journey would follow this route in reverse. Passengers now boarding at Boots are heading home via the Grand Tour of Broadfield Lane or Fenside. The extra few minutes via the memorial would be a price well worth paying for access to Wide Bargate. It is appreciated that this service is barely profitable, if at all. However, the Boston Town Strategy states that we have been given £20 million over time, partly to improve transport and to revive high streets. Surely the relatively small amount of funding needed to improve and sustain a passenger-friendly service could be found. There seems to be enough for less useful projects. A bus service should not be for company profit or efficiency of schedules. It should serve the needs of its passengers. To quote question six of the consultation paper on the amalgamation of councils, town councils play a vital role in local life. They represent their communities and work to improve wellbeing and quality of life, having legal powers to do this. If, despite my hopefully persuasive argument, it is decided no change is necessary, at least reinstate the bus stop by savers. It is difficult and unpleasant enough struggling the quarter mile back from Wide Bargate, even without carrying shopping. Having to wait in the narrow pavement near Boots, the only seating and metal pole in a drafty shelter offering no respite from the bitter wind off the Haven is the final straw. This bus stop is a fiasco. At least three buses, sometimes five, arrive at the same time, causing tailback on the road, obscuring the pedestrian crossing and creating chaos as passengers scramble to find their bus. Passersby are caught up in the confusion and at school leaving time, it is mayhem. The bus stop by savers offers a concrete plinth for weary shoppers with no obstruction to passersby. The bus could swing round the end of Marketplace and park at the original stop, which is still there, without affecting any traffic. Even the bus drivers complain about the present arrangement. From the wider perspective, Boston is not a thriving and vibrant town. Citing the regeneration of Boston as a reason for stopping the bus is insupportable. The Boston Strategy states that its objective is to ensure residents and visitors can access and leave the town centre easily and utilise sustainable forms of transport where available and a retailing centre that serves the needs of the local community. What we now have is a town centre where half of it is effectively denied to regular users. The marketplace is uninspiring. Even the market has little to offer apart from the old stalwarts of fruit and veg, the flower stall and the indefatigable underwear lady. Other stalls be mostly cheap and anything but cheerful. There is little to suggest that a much better selection of vital and interesting shops lies at the other end of Straight Bargate. This much more attractive area has old established small shops as well as Lidl, Iceland, the post office, even the own shoe shop in town. But for how long? Increasingly, shopkeepers there are saying how hard it is to keep going. Admittedly, the bus passengers aren't going to revitalize the town, but they need the facilities, particularly the Lidl's and Herren's. There is a car park on the Green, but it is seldom full. Perhaps people with cars don't need the cheaper shops and make a choice where to shop. Probably Tesco or downtown or further afield. When M&amp;S have opened their new food store and a better bus service you provided there, it would be even less incentive to come to a town already dominated by East European food shops, barbers and charity shops. As and when the promised delights of Rosegarth are a reality, there will be little to encourage trudging over the pedestrian bridge and up to the marketplace, let alone as far as Wide Bargate. This is particularly true with day trippers. After walking from the coach station along West Street to the marketplace, they arrive to find nothing, nothing they couldn't find in Skegness. Looking down Straight Bargate, they would never realise the best part is down at the end. Don't kid yourselves that most of them care about the historic stump or the fantastic architecture. Most of them only want shops and a coffin. Unless solution is found quickly to revitalize Boston, starting with reuniting the starting with reuniting the two halves, where reinstating the Fenside route could help, this town will decline even more. Even the brilliant flower displays around the town won't save it. I am not speaking for my own sake. I am here to represent most of the Fenside bus users who, after a year, are still unhappy with the situation but feel unable to challenge it. I appreciate the difficulties faced by the council over this, with cost-benefit analysis and the like, particularly as most of you, fortunately, have no experience of being old or struggling with physical disabilities. However, you are elected to represent Boston residents and improve well-being and quality of life. Reinstituting the bus up to Wide Bargate would certainly do that, even if for only a small percentage of people. So, one year on, please stop muttering about reviewing this matter, retrieve the original request from its dusty "no further action" corner, and use your legal power to improve the well-being and quality of life for a small but important group of residents. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to correct one thing you said, and that was that I didn't say that I wouldn't try and reinstate the bus service through Straight Bargate because I didn't think there was a need. It was because I disagreed fundamentally with the bus ever going through Straight Bargate in the first place. And I did direct you to Lincolnshire County Council, who is the transport authority. I did direct you to Lincolnshire County Council because they are the local transport authority, and it is only they who have the power to reinstate the bus service. However, I did tell you, they had made a choice at that time to direct people who wish to travel within and around the town to Call Connect. And they have put a huge amount of funding into Call Connect rather than a public bus service as a political choice and a political way forward. We have, as district councillors, we have no say over that at all. And those are the facts of the matter. Many of the other points you made, I fundamentally disagree with. I guess, Chair, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And the areas you say are unattractive in Boston, I personally find very beautiful, especially Boston Stump, which is an architectural marvel, especially when you consider the year it was built. And one last thing. You accuse me of not being elderly, however, I would like to remind you that I am a pensioner. But thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Criswell.
Okay. Thank you for joining us this evening. I would just like to draw your attention to something which you've brought up and I disagree with. And I hope that councillor Gilbert will be able to jump in with me. Just this week, Boston Market has achieved Market Achievement of the Year from the National Association of the British Market Authorities. Mike is the portfolio holder. I don't know when you actually last went to the market, but the market is absolutely thriving. Sixty out of sixty-four of our pitches are actually occupied every single week. On the traders' monthly market, for traders, for farmers, and makers, we have an additional nineteen to twenty-five regular market stalls. Currently, the traders don't park their vans. It's beautiful. We've got new gazebos, the bunting. It's absolutely phenomenal. And it's a gem, I think, an absolute gem. So I'm not sure when you last went to the market, but I think the impression you've given is not correct. I don't know if councillor Gilbert wants to come in on that.
Councillor Gilbert?
Yeah, I mean, there's two issues that I'll just refer to. And thank you for coming and sharing your views with us. You're very articulate, and I understand everything you said. I would actually like to have a photocopy of your statement, if you don't mind, so I can go through it carefully and have a look at what you've said. But there's two issues. One is, yes, I completely endorse everything that councillor Criswell has said. We are attempting to build what I'm classing as almost a sort of post-COVID legacy with the market. It took a big hit as a result of COVID, and we're doing a lot of work to try and re-establish it and bring it back to its former glory. We have received an award this week for the quality of our makers' market, which is something which I hope is going to not only lead to some regenerative sort of efforts within the retail sector in Boston itself, but also will continue to help the market to grow. In relation to the buses, I differ entirely with councillor Dorian's perspective on the buses that went through Narrow Bargate. I was happy to endorse that. It was a ten- or twelve-year running argument between various councillors over whether they agreed with it or whether they didn't agree with it. And I think you could probably sort of like split the council down the middle in terms of those of us who thought it was appropriate precisely for the reasons that you've outlined, and those people that felt it was a nuisance.
No? Yeah.
Yeah.
So much to hold you up. Yes.
I just pick up. I think I understood the point you were making. So, and the point was how many councillors actually use the buses? I don't know the answer to that question. I don't use the buses.
Well, I do know that when all this started, somebody came and sat down in the precinct to try and prevent the buses going through.
Yeah, I mean, I've already made the point, I think, that I supported the buses going through Narrow Bargate. And the argument that was given at the time was the fact that it was very expensive running the buses around John Adams Way. I presume that still remains the case, but we're no longer running the buses through Narrow Bargate, which is the point that you very eloquently made. I'm not sure, but picking up the point that councillor Dorian made, this isn't anything that Boston Borough Council has any real control over. Transport is the responsibility of Lincolnshire County Council. I believe in the past, they received a subsidy to run the bus through Narrow Bargate. I suspect that subsidy has now been removed. And for commercial reasons, Briar Lane no longer run that service in the way they have in the past. So I think, I'll have a copy of your notes. I'll take them all and consider them. I will be prepared to write to you later on, just to sort of give you some further thoughts that I might have on what you said. But in terms of those three issues, the market, the buses, and the funding, I think we probably explain where we all stand on them.
Well, my basic point, excuse my taking more time, is that people cannot get to Wide Bargate. I don't care which way it goes, we just need the means of getting there. Yes. As you can see, I can't walk very far at the moment.
Thank you, Chairman. My name was mentioned. I'm probably the oldest person in the room, maybe. I don't know. I certainly feel old most of the time. Seems everyone said this, eh? Well, yeah, I'd say I do understand how she feels. Bus drivers are a problem. I live on Chester Way and West Ward. We had a bus service down there. The county council did offer Briar Lane more money to keep the service, but they said they couldn't afford to run it around there, and that was the end of it. Ashen Hall Drive has never had a bus service, despite the fact they built a bus lane from Ashen Hall Drive into Sleaford Road with a special device to stop other people using it. That pillar has never been lowered, in my opinion, in the, what, ten, fifteen years that it was there. No bus service there, run round Ashen Hall Drive. There are a lot of elderly people in my ward, but of course, they don't have access to any form of public transport. That really is the situation. I understand how members of the public feel about that, but the reality is that if a bus company has to make money in order to survive, it's not a public service run by the county or the county or whatever. It is an independent private operator. If it can't make money, it doesn't exist. And that really is the root of all of it. There's not enough money to be able to make these bus services run profitably. We already know that because we had the manager of Briar Lane in pretty well televised. So we know the situation. I'm sorry about it, but there's no real way around it, as far as I can see, unless, of course, the state provides a public service, you know, bus service, and funds it all out of taxes. But I think that'd be very unpopular with most taxpayers. So I think it's a no-win situation, really. But I do feel very much for you, but the situation is without support from government. Well, I don't think the council's in a position to fork. I don't think of anything, actually, these days. We're pretty short of cash, really, so it's not really that situation.
And so we need to...
Anyway, I'll leave it at that, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you much, Chairman, for at least allowing me some time to speak.
Commissioner Idon?
Yeah, thank you for coming along and some good points. But while we've had byline at these meetings and various meetings, and we understand the service that they can provide, I'm unsure about the Call Connect, and I agree that money has been put into the Call Connect service. Is there... How much is it used? I've never used it, obviously, but how much is it used? And is it a viable way of getting into Boston Town Centre?
Maybe this might be something that you want to maybe ask them in to come and talk to us. No, no, I mean, Call Connect rather than Briar Lane. To ask the Call Connect organisers so they can give us a briefing on what they do and how it works. Councillor Gilbert?
Well, as I'm taking a copy of the lady's letter, I can pick up that issue about Call Connect when I do some research to answer her points.
Councillor Danny?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First of all, I would like to congratulate Boston for winning the marked award. It's something which is good for us. Call Connect, how it works: you have to call them, and then you organise a time with them, and they will pick you, and then you have to organise your time to come back. So it's all about connection and connection with them, and that's how it works. So it's not a very difficult one, because I know a lot of my friends who lived in Friedville, they live in Antons Gauze. So they call them, they pick them, they bring them to the market, they do their shopping, they have a coffee, they meet their friends, and then they have a timing to go back. So it's always available in that way. The only thing which I want to add on the comments of my colleagues, and thank you to Mr Webster. The issue with the transport now, and I think Briar Lane is one of them, is they do their own surveys. If you have five people going to town and three coming back, it's no need to have a bus running for three or four people. It just costs you more money to pay driver and the fuel and all the cost of the bus. And I think, I'm afraid, so that's how it works. It would be very hard to convince them to bring a bus who goes from A to B, Chester Way, probably to town, for probably three or four people a day. So they don't want to do that. And I think it's sad. It's not many people who use buses, but we can try our best and probably come with an idea how we can put probably a connection between Boots to the other side of town, to Green Bargate. Probably we come with maybe an electric bus from Boston with volunteers to take people from there to there and make it easy for people. So hopefully something can come of it. Thank you, Mr Chair.
What I will also do, though, is I will ask, if they can send a copy of the speech you made to us to the portfolio holder at County Council responsible for public transport, and ask them to give you a reply. We now must apologize, Mr Wolf, we've used our public speaking time. Councillor Dorian?
Sorry, just as you said that, Chair, I remembered one other point I wish to point out to Mrs Webster, because I did, we met twice, actually, for a couple of hours each time, certainly well over an hour, almost two hours. And I took your comments very, very seriously, because I felt you described me as being flippant. You know, I was just trying to offer you solutions to problems that you presented. And I did take your comments away, and I did speak to Briar Lane. The extremely good idea you had was about using the bus stop outside Savers, and I agreed with that wholeheartedly. I took it to Briar Lane, I discussed it with the managing director. She also thought it was a really good idea and was very keen. I then took it to the Boston Transport Board, which was chaired then by the Conservatives, and they kind of dismissed it. They weren't very keen, and it didn't get a lot of traction. And again, it comes back to the fact that they are the local transport authority. It's entirely in their gift whether to reinstate that bus stop. Because we actually talked to Briar Lane about creating one, reinstating the one on the other side as well, so buses could swoop round. I agreed entirely with your point about the bus stop outside Boots, or it's actually past Boots, isn't it? It's entirely unsuitable. And as you quite rightly said, when Boston Grammar School finishes, it becomes a bit like a beehive, just in that very congested area where the pavement narrows as well. So I have been down this road, explored every avenue, but more power to your elbow and grist to your mill. I hope you're more successful than I was.
Thank you. So they will arrange to have a copy of that sent to the county. Thank you. And I'm afraid now, Mr Wolf... We are...
It was responded to this morning. It was responded to this morning. It was responded to this morning. It was sent to your email address at about 8:45 this morning. Well, it was offering you a meeting next week with the relevant officer.
Yeah, I mean, you were basically...
Chairman, the viewing public or anybody watching this back cannot hear Mr Wolf speaking, and it's very frustrating for the viewer to only hear one side of the conversation.
Sorry. This is from a letter that I sent you back in January, and you've just got back to me now in September. And this is after a couple of nudges to a few of your councillors I've met throughout the year of wanting to have a response. So I was wondering why it's taken so long? And why is it that we've only got ten minutes to talk to the council every two months?
I'm afraid that's what our constitution is.
This is the first time I've heard of it, and I've been coming to you for over a year now. This is not really good, and I've got what I think is a very important question here, which is actually following on from what councillor Dorian has mentioned earlier on. And I would like to put it to you as, I think, a very important subject, which, no disrespect to Mrs Webster's question, which is also a very important subject, but this is an important subject, but following on from councillor Dorian. So please, may I read this out to you? If you want to discuss it or not.
I would like to propose, in order to support Mr Wolf, I've no idea what he's going to talk about. I've genuinely got no idea.
It's not going to take too long.
Well, but what I'm going to propose is we suspend standing orders, and because he's made the effort to come along tonight, that we hear him out.
Yes, it was proposed to suspend standing orders. Is that seconded? Seconded, those in favour?
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillors. Right. Please may I ask the, I'm going to read this. "Please may I ask the council members what their plan to do about the vandalism that is plaguing our streets in the form of the flags on the lampposts? I am a patriotic man, and I do appreciate the cross at St George being flown at times of celebration and pride of our nation. But this act of thuggery and racism is an offence to every proper UK citizen, as well as being an offence in law. As I presume, these people do not have the permission to put these flags on the lampposts. As you all know, these flags have been put there to intimidate the foreign nationals, trying to make them feel unwelcome and unwanted, which, I hope you'll agree with me, is not the case. So I ask again, what is a council doing about removing these flags from around Boston?"
Commissioner Criswell?
Okay. I understand what you're saying, and I totally understand that. I think the first thing that came to my mind when the flags went up was that they're not our assets. They're being hung on the lamp posts, which, were they not ours? They're Lincolnshire County Council.
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's County Council and highways for the vast majority of it. There was some graffiti put on to... There was some graffiti put on to one of the roundabouts, which BTAC operators removed.
So you're not going to do anything?
Um, I didn't say that at all, did I? What I said was.
You seem to be pushing responsibility.
No, what I said was that they're not, they're not our things to deal with. If I had my way, they would all be taken down. I have no, I don't, I think the whole thing's disgusting, the putting the flag to right. That's never been my politics. But they're not ours to take down. I wish they were.
So you are, we are Boston, yes? They are Lincoln. Have you, as the Boston area town council, got in touch with Lincoln to say, please can you get somebody to come along and take these down from your lamp posts?
We haven't, it's not been an issue that until this very minute has been raised with us.
Really? Is that really the case? That you're not disgusted that people like this have come along and are vandalising Boston by putting up these flags? Or do you not see it as that?
I definitely see it as that.
So you have seen this?
I actually haven't seen any.
Have you not?
No.
Okay, then I suggest you drive around.
Disabled, I don't drive.
Argyle Street, round Asda, round the Station Ward of Boston West. And they're flying and down the Fen Side, they're flying all around there.
I don't question that. I just said, I literally, I haven't.
Well, they are there.
Yes. councillor Woodley.
I agree with you, but the fact of the matter is, it is Lincolnshire County Council responsible for those lamp posts. And if they decide that they aren't going to do anything, there's nothing we can do about that. We can't, we can't do anything about somebody else's property. If people wanted to fly all those flags on their own property, they were entitled to. So it's not our property, that's the problem. The Lincolnshire County Council is responsible for the lamp posts. And you have to have permission from Lincolnshire County Council to fly anything. It's up to Lincolnshire County Council to step in, remove those things. And if necessary prosecute people who have adorned them in the first place. But it's up to them to do that. It's not up to BTAC to do that. BTAC is not in fact, it's committee of the Borough Council. So Borough Council has no control on it. If Lincolnshire County Council, you know, perhaps it's, we should say it's Reform UK leadership, might be very happy to see those flags there, there'd be nothing that we can do about it. You see, we can't, we can't just go and remove those flags. Otherwise we'd be committing vandalism ourselves, actually. We'd be trespassing on somebody else's property. So we have to be careful. Maybe, maybe Lincolnshire County Council and its Reform leadership will actually, you know, remove these flags. But I don't know, maybe they're happy to see them there. Who knows?
councillor Danny.
Oh, sorry, can I just ask that? Have you asked them? Have you asked Lincolnshire County Council whether they've given permission? Has this council?
No, I haven't asked them. It's none of my business. Why should I ask them? It's their business. It's their business. It's their, I don't have any say over Lincolnshire County Council. And it's their business as to whether they want them there or not. It's not for me to tell them what to do.
councillor Danny.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm always in town, there's a lot of flags. I totally agree with you. Until now, I haven't met anybody from a different country to Britain complaining about them, to be honest with you. However, however, I did experience some sort of, almost an assault front of my eyes at Caffineros. A gentleman was sitting and another group, three people were coming to sit next to them to have a coffee outside. And he threw a chair on them. He didn't want them to sit there. Because he feels he's more English and they're foreigners. These things happen. As I would say for myself, I think it's our duty as councillors to talk to our communities and make them aware that there is no hatred, there is no racism. Some people, they might carry racism inside them. We cannot judge that. But like I say, as a councillor, my role is to explain to people and talk to people and diffuse the issues. And I think that's what we can do. Yes, there is a lot of flags. The county council is responsible. What you say makes sense. And I think as a committee here, we should probably write a letter to the county and start the first step and see where we can go with that. But I think it would be probably, yeah. I think it would be the best way to diffuse the situation and see what's happening. Bear in mind, the county is run now by Reform. You hear the speeches of Nigel Farage and all of them. So let's hope for something can just bring our communities together. And I think we are responsible for that and we should work for that. We all live under one flag and we belong to this country, we pay our taxes in this country.
I mean, the problem we have here is.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, sorry.
This is just something totally outside of our control. So there's not a great discussion, but councillor Dorian, I think you wanted to say something. And councillor Gilbert.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to explain, Mr Wolf, I've been extremely unwell for several weeks. And this is my first sort of foray back into council meetings today. And whilst I have been very unwell, I have been checking my email from time to time. And I have to tell you, I've had no complaints whatsoever from residents, either about the flags or about the painting of the sheep on Whitebargate or about the crosses on the roundabouts. There's been no complaints at all. And whilst individual councillors might harbour certain views about issues, we are, as you rightly said, here to represent people. And I'm always very cautious that I'm not going to write letters representing just me. That would be very wrong to use my position to represent something I might think. I need to be representing people who I'm the voice for, who I'm the advocate for. So now that you've come tonight and expressed your view, councillor Danny has made a proposition, I think, with you proposing that the committee write a letter. But given that we all, everybody here may have different views, we do have a Reform councillor on the committee. It may not pass, it may pass, it may not, I genuinely don't know. But you are honestly the first resident to raise this issue with me. And in fact, quite the contrary, again, whilst I was very ill, I deactivated my Facebook account. And I've kind of dipped my toe back in recently. And although I haven't posted anything, I've read some things. And what I have read appears to be overwhelming support from a number of local residents for the flags. And so it's very difficult. You know, we live, I think, in a divided community at the moment. And I would agree with councillor Danny and we don't often agree, but we do need to find a way to come together. So I'm happy to support writing to the county council to ask, to tell them your views, to tell them that you're hurt and angry and upset and ask them what they intend to do about the flags. I'll second that if he said his proposal.
councillor Gilbert, then councillor Vicky.
Yeah, I mean, clearly this issue of flags is a very controversial one and a very emotional one, as you very well demonstrate really. I've seen all the flags all over the town. And I kind of echo the point that councillor Dorian's made, that nobody's actually come to me and complained about the fact that they're there. However, I think as a councillor, we were very concerned about the desecration of some of our monuments in the town centre with these flags. And I think we've taken action to ensure that those flags are removed from those monuments. It doesn't do to deface some of our precious buildings and our monuments in the town centre. In relation to the lamp posts, nobody has complained about them. But I do see the fact that at some point they will become very tired and very tatty and they do need to be replaced. So I support the proposal that's been made that we contact the county council and we get some kind of timescale from them as to when these flags are likely to be removed. Activism generally is a very important part of Britain's democracy. And we have seen kind of gantry scramblers and we've seen occupying movements and things like that. And I think we just have to accept that in a democracy such as ours, people will express their political views in ways that we might not necessarily all agree with. The important thing is we kind of show a level of acceptance and then deal with the aftermath. And I think removing these flags and getting a timescale for their removal is an important part of what this committee can do.
councillor Vickian, councillor Noble, then councillor Woodley.
Thank you, Mr Wolf, for coming today. Just a question, do you know how to use Fix My Street app? Do you know what it is?
Yes, I do.
Have you ever thought to report things like this?
Haven't done it because I wanted to bring it to the council first. But yeah, I do know how to do it. So I can put it through Fix My Street, yes.
Thank you very much. That's all I wanted, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
councillor Noble, councillor Woodley.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I didn't catch the gentleman's name, but I thought he made some two. Mr Wolf, thank you, Mr Wolf. Yes, I thought the stamps you made were pretty much absurd. You said they're evidence of fascism. So like, no, you've had your say, let me finish. You ask a question, I'll speak. That's just good manners, yes? Right, you said, and I wrote it down, these are evidence of fascism. Fascism is a political creed which believes in the overwhelming power of the state. Loving your national flag and seeing it float is no example of fascism. It's just plainly absurd. And you also said that they're there to intimidate foreign nationals. I very much doubt that people who put those flags up had any intention of intimidating anybody. They just want to show their love of their country, which is perfectly appropriate. Now, as regards that our responsibility is not our responsibility. You can certainly write to LCC and see if they want to get it removed. This committee can take a view on that. I don't object in any way to seeing the flags there. So I won't be supporting any move to have them removed. But it's up to the committee what they decide to do. But that's all I've got to say. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Woodley.
Sorry, sir, I didn't catch your name. I actually said thuggery and racism, not fascism at all.
You said evidence of fascism. I wrote it down when you said it.
Then you wrote it down wrong, sir.
Well, it'll be on the tape. It'll be on the tape. Now he'll apologise because I'm right, because I wrote it down. Thank you.
I've got to hear and I wrote, read my words.
councillor Woodley, okay, Mr Wolf, thank you. councillor Woodley.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Wolf. Well, actually I have received one complaint about all these flags. I get it every day, every morning, every time I go out. I wonder about that might be, well, that's my wife. She objects to these flags, you know, the most profound way. And she says quite rightly, I suppose actually we're members of the United Kingdom. I don't regard myself as being English. I regard myself as being British and a part of the United Kingdom. I'm happy to see the Union flag flown anywhere and everywhere. I'm not so happy about seeing the St George's flag flown. I don't relate to that. I relate to the Union flag, you know. And I suppose if I was, I have Scottish roots. If I was Scottish, I might object, sorry. Because obviously I'd like to see the Saltar flown, possibly, possibly not.
Anyway, we have.
Anyway, I'll come to the point if I may, can I, and then you want to round up. I'm happy to take the matter up with the county council myself, whether or not the committee does it. If you want, if I need to get my wife on my back. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. We have a proposal that we contact the county council on the issue of the flags and the painting to find out what their plans are for it, how long they're going to be there. Am I right in that what people are wanting? councillor Dorian.
If you permit me, Chair, I think we should make an effort to represent Mr Wolf's views, the trouble he's taken to come tonight. And also the balance is though, I am very aware that a lot of my residents support the flying of these flags and we're here to represent everyone. So I did like the point councillor Gilbert made, that it's more, if we write, then we can represent Mr Wolf's views. We can also represent anyone else who's made the effort to contact the councillor. But I think our approach as a committee should be to ask them the timescale for removing them and their plans if they do become tatty and torn and on site.
So just for clarity though, the proposal is to forward Mr Wolf's comments to the county and ask them to reply. And then us as a committee to ask what is the procedure for taking down the flags should they start to become tatty and on site? Is that? Yep, is that, so those in favour, please.
Yeah, just briefly, I'm probably happy for Mr Wolf's representative to be able to counsel for the LCC. But I won't support any move by this committee as a whole to say they should be removed, if that's what you're suggesting. I think it maybe is what it is. No, that's all right. Just we'll be clear on that. That's okay.
Okay, those in favour, please show. Those again. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Page. Yep. So we've now got part two of the agenda, item one. Financial position. The first time I've been this is the twenty-five, twenty-six quarter one financial position, which starts on page seven of the agenda. And I would like to ask Nicole Hayes, the head of finance delivery, to present the report.
Good evening and thank you, Chair. So this report starts on page eleven of the agenda pack and details the financial summary forecasting the expected year end outturn compared to the approved budget taken at quarter one for the year to the thirty-first of March twenty-six. So table one summarises the service areas and shows the forecast deficit position of nine hundred and seven pound. I will now take you through the detail. Turning to page twelve. Table three shows the twenty-five, twenty-six budget spent to the thirtieth of June and the expected outturn to the thirty-first of March twenty-six for open spaces and play areas. There's a projected overspend of twelve thousand one hundred and thirty pound in relation to employee costs, which is due to a movement of a staffing role from events. This will net off, as we will see further through the report, when we look at the events forecast. Following on, table four details the position for allotments, showing the outturn is in line with the approved budget. Table five shows a surplus position of eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-four pound for the Central Park, with the majority of the saving being in relation to the gate lock and service stopping. Moving on to page fifteen. Table six shows an overspend of eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-nine pound in relation to public conveniences. This is primarily due to increased material supplier costs and an anticipated underachievement in fees and charges income based on the quarter one actuals. You will see this is partly offset by income from Mayfair and the Autumn Fair events. Table seven shows a forecast surplus of twenty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-six pound for events. Here you will see the movement of the twelve thousand one hundred and thirty pound to open spaces and play areas that I just mentioned earlier, within the fourteen thousand seven hundred pound for the employee cost under spend. Additional income of eight thousand is also anticipated for the space high for the Autumn Fair. Table eight shows a slight underspend on provisions. And finally, table nine on page eighteen shows a saving of twenty-six thousand one hundred and forty-four pound, primarily relating to the street cleaning service review. So taking all these figures into consideration, the forecast deficit is nine hundred and seven pound, which apologies for making you turn those pages, back to page eleven, that table one will show you that full summary. So again, taking you back to that first page on page eleven. The one table I haven't mentioned is the reserve table of table two. So if the deficit was to remain of that nine hundred and seven pound, it would result in the reserve balance being at two hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-two. Thank you. That concludes my report and happy to take any questions.
Yeah, just a small one on page fifteen then, on this cash collection service. Can you explain more behind the figures on that one, please?
Yes, thank you councillor. So we have got a slight overspend there because it's the change in the way that cash is being collected. As that budget set in, it was determined in one way. And due to other arrangements, it has resulted in a slight overspend. We have a service that will collect that cash that is incurred through the public conveniences.
Okay, so what is the change in the service collection then, the difference?
The change is how it is collected. Previously it's been collected by Boston Borough Council employees. Now it is collected on behalf of us. Now it is collected on behalf of us by a different company.
Can we not go back to the cheaper method of collecting?
That's something I can take away and get a response for you.
Thank you, Chair. It's really a comment. I'm really happy to see this report well structured and easy to read and understand. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair, I have a few questions, I'm not sure if Miss Hayes can answer all of them. But page 11, we've got the employee costs removed from events to open spaces and play areas. Why was that done?
I don't have that specific detail, but I can take that away and ask the service.
Okay, thank you.
If you could give any technical questions in advance, it does allow the officer the ability to actually answer on the night.
I appreciate constraints of time, but yeah, other things. But right, just going on to page 15. There was, it, there's no, and the variance, there's nothing shown. And it talks about an agency cost for a vacant post. So what was that post? Has it been filled and what was the agency used? It's page 15.
Yes, so the agency cost is in relation to the public conveniences. So that will be a public convenience officer. In terms of this specific company, that's something I would need to look further into.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm pleased you addressed those councillor Isard mentioned about the cash collection. Because that was a question I was going to ask you. I thought whether it relates to parking, but you said it's just exclusively not on parking and gimmicks, down to a public convenience cash, yes, collected, yeah, thank you. And then on page 16, the Marcus Officer post was removed. Do you know why that was?
I do not, but I can take it away and ask the service.
And then same page, it's got other high autumn fair. So was there not a budget for that? Was that not a planned event initially? And it was something that was decided would happen? Or you don't know? Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this is an event that someone came forward to put on externally, not an internal planned event. But it's income, yeah.
And lastly, on page 18, we've got street cleaning. There's no figure shown for spend. We've got an approved budget and then there's, so why is that? There was, on Q1, there was no spend. Is that an omission or? We don't know.
Apologies, could you explain that one further? I'm sure.
Third party payments, street cleaning, we've got an approved budget. There's no figure shown Q1 at all in that column, why is that?
Yes, so as you'll see, there is a variance there of that £26,140. So as part of the service review, it was determined that this was not necessarily charged to charge to BTAC. So as part of the budget, that was put in as an expense and that has been taken out and is contributing towards your final position.
Okay, so it's not charged to BTAC, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all, thank you, Chair.
Not generally about this report, very good report, very clear, very easy to understand, thank you. But just going back to our reserves position, which is on page eight. I see that we have a minimum requirement of £70,000 as reserves. But currently we have, with the underspend, £289,000. Is it for BTAC to promote the Boston town area? And could we look at using some of the reserves to do just that? To enhance Boston? Whether it would be through tourism or whether it be through making good the signage and cleaning the signage and making the place look even more appealing than it does already? Because to my way of thinking, that's an awful lot of reserves we've got compared to what we need as a minimum requirement. And I think that money could be better spent investing, say in tourism, that could help build our small businesses and our main businesses up in that way. But I'm not sure whether we can draw from the reserves as a committee. Well, obviously, there are two things. Obviously, this is just firstly, these are the quarter one figures. Though obviously they are the reserves at the beginning of the year. They don't reflect what we're committed to spend during the year. But yeah, apart from that, though, yes. I mean, it is up to us when we do our budget setting next year to look at where we want to spend our money, how we want to spend the money. And as long as we don't during the course of the year go below the £70,000, then we can alter where we spend our money, yeah. That's all very possible. Though I do think these figures, obviously being quarter one figures, maybe look a little bit stronger than they would be at the end of the year. I agree with you, Chair, but since I've been elected, we've always had very rosy kind of reserve funding in BTAC, more than what we really require as a minimum. And I just think that now's the opportunity to maybe use some of that to leave a kind of legacy where we can show that we're trying our best to sell. Totally agree with you, Cathy. We need then to be mindful of that when we come to do our budget for next year. Councillor Danny. Oh, sorry, do you want to?
Thank you. Just two things I'd like to draw your attention to is in relation to that minimum reserve balance. So that's not that you can't spend greater than that 70k. That is making sure your reserve balance doesn't drop below that 70k. And I think one of the actions from a previous meeting was that we would look at that as part of our budget setting process in conjunction with the 151. And secondly, if I could just draw your attention to the approved budget. So your net expenditure for your approved budget was £804,000. Your preset that you received is £769,000. So at this point, you have a variety of savings which is contributing to balancing that off. That is something we do need to watch closely, that if that overspend continues to increase, that will need to come from reserves, as you can see in that table two, that 907 is in there. But if that does increase, that will subsequently drop your reserve balance. So again, something to consider for this year and future years.
I agree with you, but we seem to be having a really good finance cabinet member who seems to be controlling the figures quite well. I just think that in maybe in a year and a half's time, we won't be here, but we could use some of the money before we hand it over to Lincolnshire. Be to a new town council. Councillor Goshe.
Just a quick one. Do we also make the MTFS for BTAC budgets? But we don't see it here.
So you won't see the five years here, this is just the quarter one position for 2526. In terms of that full MTFS position, that will come through in January as part of the draft budget for 2627.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, just coming after councillor Isard, what he said. I think, because I remember once we had like £60,000 savings and we didn't do anything with it, and I think that was probably 2018. So we rushed to come with ideas to use that £60,000, but we didn't use it properly, I will admit that. However, what I would suggest is probably in the future, if we have any savings, is we have to see it as a committee again and probably come with ideas what we can do for Boston. I totally agree with you. Some people create the history of Boston that it is now. We should create something for the future generation and that's how history works. So if we can get all along together and come with ideas, I think it will be good to use our money in the right way and proper way and leave some legacy for the future of Boston or even attract tourists. There is a lot of things we can do, which doesn't cost a lot of money, but it will make a difference. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
You have a better say? Councillor Woodley.
Thank you, Chair. And I take the point, actually, that we might disappear in 18 months' time. We don't really employ anybody as such. I think when people are employed by the Borough Council, because we're a committee of the Borough Council. But obviously, as this council draws its close, it may well have to face redundancy payments. And I don't know whether the redundancy payments would have to be met out of that balance or whether we come out of another one. It's a technical question, which I suppose is, they can't be answered tonight, but it has to be something in our mind, because we could disappear in less than 18 months' time. And that rather large amount of money we have here might easily be swallowed up very quickly in payments for, you know, redundancy of our staff. Terrible situation. Terrible situation, don't want to see this council go at all. Anyway, thank you, Chairman.
We've commented, there's no actual resolution, as we noted this. Anybody in favour? Okay. Which now, the next item is the work programme, which starts on page 19. I will ask Mr Perry to provide more information.
Thank you, Chair. Members will note that the work programme has been updated to include a report on future BTAC events, which was due to be considered this meeting, but will now be considered the November 27 meeting. As I indicated at the last meeting, Lincolnshire Housing Partridge has confirmed that it will address the committee at the November meeting as well. Thank you, Chair.
Any body, any items they want to add to the work programme? Councillor Zavikian.
Do you, do we remember there was a boy, I think 12 or 14 years old? He was asking to create space for bicycles or play area for skate park. Would that be possible to add to work programme?
I would report on that, yeah. Everybody happy with that?
That was a young boy from, I think, Haven High. I don't remember his name and he was asking for.
I can find the email, you know, and just to clarify more details, yeah?
Yeah, if we could have a report on that and cost and thing. Yep. Yeah. Seconded, yeah. Obviously, it's just going to be a report on.
Chair, we've got the report, of course, coming to January, looking at the, from today. So we can add that into that report, if that's convenient for everybody.
Yeah, let's have a look at that. Yeah. Councillor Austin raised with me when she was here about the issue of not many people using the minibus for today's tour and asking whether in future we might like to look at members sharing cars and things. So if we can just make a note of that and we will just think about that when, if we have another tour of assets. Anybody else, anything they want to add to the work programme? No. Thank you. Which then brings us to the small grant scheme. That which starts on page 21 of the agenda pack. And again, Mr Perry will present the report.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. This report sets out the proposed distribution of grants in this round and appendix one has the relevant details.
Again, should we, members want to discuss any of the grants, we will need to exclude the public. So I'll just make members aware of that.
I'm happy to move the recommendation, Chair.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor Danny. So if no one wants anything, so all those in favour? Thank you very much, carried unanimously. Oh, what's this? Oh, yes, I was going to mention just to, we actually, the mayor organised an event where we invited some of the recipients of grants to come along. It actually was a useful event and I think it actually something we might want to try to extend into a more public event than that one was. But at that event, actually, councillor Isard was there and myself, there were various videos made from the recipients. And so over the next few weeks and months, there will be some publicity to the grant scheme about the work we're doing and obviously encouraging people to apply. But then, I think that then completes everything, don't we? Yep, that completes, closes the meeting, thanks for your time. Need to sign them in. That's really handy, having that.